Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
Read an open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand this fifth day of November 2018.
And three consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. 3.1, additional items and new business to the agenda.
There is none.
3.2, minutes of the October 1, 2018 regular board meeting and minutes of the October 8, 2018 special board meeting. Approval of the financial report. Approval of the activity fund report. Approval of the activity fund inter-account transfers. Approval to declare items as surplus property. And approval of the child nutrition report.
I did not see anything that was wrong on our minutes from our October 1 or October 8 special board meeting. 3.3, the approval of the finance report. If you'll look at the first attachment that you have, that is a breakdown of our finances through, and if you'll look over to the second slide, it's okay. If you look over to the second slide, I have shown this the last couple of board meetings. This is a comparison through FY 10 to FY 18 of our revenue and expenditures. If you move over to slide three, are we off the internet?
Oh my God, no, it's accurate song, but I'm sure I need to get out, sorry.
Are you on?
Panic, a panic.
Okay.
See, this is what happens.
Mr. Argos, is this finance report, number of board meetings?
Yes, sir. The first attachment.
It's, you're clear down, it's the second page, your third page, you're clear down.
Go down, there you go.
And you have to go to 104.
There you go. So if you look at slide three, and that is a comparison with this year, the last year's spending, and you can see again that our expenses are above our revenue, that is not anything out of the ordinary. We don't start collecting any of the admin warranty until we get to December and January. If you look at that last slide, this is a telling slide for our local revenue that we receive. You can see that we are up in our gross production, motor vehicle, and a little bit down in REA tax and school land earnings, but we are up in those collections. The activity fund report, 3.4, all of the activity funds are in good standing, visiting with Mrs. Durkey. We're going to have about three or four fundraisers that will be completed at the end of this month, and we'll bring those to you in December and show you the spreadsheet that we have started to do some comparisons each year. If you look at 3.6, those are surplus computers at Longfellow. With the purchase of the Chromebooks, we no longer needed those desktop computers, and we've surplused those and moved those to the bus barn. Child nutrition report. If you look at the child nutrition report, did some comparisons between this year and the last. We've served more lunches compared to last year, but fewer breakfasts. Not only for the year to date, but then also the month of September. Mrs. Eccles continues to do a good job. She's, she has done a great job working with us as administrators, meeting with us weekly to keep us apprised on what's going on with cafeteria, and I appreciate her help very much. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve consent agenda 3.1, 3.7.
Second? Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
And four. Go to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds fiscal year 19. 4.1, as presented. 4.2, as presented. 4.3, as presented, and 4.4, as presented.
Okay, if we look at 4.1, our general fund expenditures and purchase orders for the month, you'll see number 402 for 1,188. That is our live audio streaming. That was free at one point last year, but to stream our high school athletic events, it costs now, so that is for the audio streaming of those events. Number 405 is the lease that we approved last month's board meeting for the smaller white bus, the Collins, for 10,423.75. Number 407 is Amazon, ordering district supplies through Amazon. We've had more do that, so we opened a PO. 410 is Bank of America bus fuel, and what we've had to do with that, when the Collins smaller bus has been checked out, depending on where it's going, they've had to stop and fuel that bus. So Mr. Ellis keeps a gas card and checks that out, and then records it when it's turned back in, so that we're not reimbursing staff to fill out that Collins bus when they take it somewhere. 411, those were some desktop computers that we purchased for some secretaries, that their desktops weren't running like they should be, so we purchased some at some various sites so that their computers would be running better. 419 is an open purchase order for OG&E for 90,000. We think this will get us through the year. 438, that was to complete the ramp at the baseball field for 3,785. 456 was reimbursement for ag travel. And then 464 is spraying at all of our sites and then at the bus barn for $4,000. The payroll encumbrances, those are all substitute payrolls. We'll have a new employee that we'll bring to tonight, which is purchase order number 50231, and then 50232 was a long-term substitute at Alba Middle School for Mrs. Collins while she was on the turntable. With the building fund. Building fund, there wasn't a whole lot of expenditures that came out of that this month. We have Wilson Construction, that was for that patio repair work. There was some damaged concrete and some drainage issues that had to be worked on, so Wilson Construction did that. The fixture company, Lucky's Fixure Company, was for repairs, the ice machine, high school locker room. And then a large expense that we have there on 41 is asbestos abatement on our hot water tank. Mr. Potter has worked tirelessly with precision testing and then with Top Choice Mechanical, and there's a light at the end of the tunnel there. We don't think that, well, we had a, had a small leak in that, and to fix that, they had to remove that asbestos, and Mr. Potter took care of all that. We don't believe it's going to cost $13,000, but that's what we've incurred at this point. Child nutrition fund. Have a couple of purchase orders here, Maryfield Supply for printing, lunch bills, and then for ice machine filters through Brandon's Comfort Solutions. And then there is nothing from the gift fund. Are there any questions? If there are none, I would recommend we approve items 41, general fund, items 42, building fund, and item 43, child nutrition.
I had a question on 402 on general fund. For the live streaming, live audio streaming. Have we looked at costs for like YouTube streaming or anything like that?
No, we did not. So I asked Kane and Adam to come up with the best solution for us, to make sure, that is an important part of service we provide. We ran into some times last year that the audio streaming wasn't working, and we felt like this was the best solution.
Okay, so this was their recommendation?
Yes, yes.
I think it's worked better.
Seems to be, so thank you to you guys for doing that. Any other questions?
And motion? I'd make a motion, we, at 41, 42, and 43. Second? McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Superintendent Chappell?
Just want to report this, just want to remind everyone, big day tomorrow with our election and to get out and vote, there's state questions that will affect the school funding, so just want to remind everybody to do that. Want to thank everybody, and especially our administrators, for their participation and their help in the strategic planning. We had good turnout for the forum, but we also had, without their help, making phone calls and encouraging people to be there, would have been difficult to do, so I want to thank the administrators for their help through that process.
Any other communications?
We met with the calendar committee earlier this week to begin looking at 1920 calendar, five parents, five teachers, and it went really well, had a good discussion. It's a lot of moving parts to determine a calendar for a year, when you are talking about high school activities, graduation, prom, elementary students and their day, so we had a really good discussion. We're going to meet again and continue to go over those scenarios together, but want to thank those folks for being involved in that. Also want to report, I took the class in 1978 on a tour of Alba High School, a week of homecoming, and it was a very rewarding experience to take those folks around Alba High School. Great people, very excited about what we're doing, excited about the teachers, excited about our strategic plan, and they met with Elizabeth Ritchie, our foundation director, who does a fabulous job, and she was able, they committed $12,000 to our Gold Bug Foundation for a scholarship, with the hope of raising 13,000 more that night. So thankful for Elizabeth, but also for that class, a bunch of great people, and look forward to being able to provide some scholarships for our students. That's all I have.
Principals' reports, Mr. Kane?
Okay, I'll be presenting the state test data, and a little precursor to that, you know, we started our curriculum mapping project in the spring of 2017, ended up to align the curriculum top to bottom. That was also part of an effort to prove that all the standards are taught, and it was also a reflective practice for teachers to explore the standards a little bit more. It also helps to create a pacing guide for what the year is going to be like. It was never meant to be just a box that we were going to check. We want that to be a living document that we use consistently throughout the year and revise and refine it as we go, and we've done some of that already this year. Part of the teacher's evaluation tool also requires some kind of a long-range pacing guide as well, so I'll kind of come back to that in a little bit. So before we talk about the test data, there's some things that we need to know about it. As you know, we used to be a part of the Common Core Consortium, and the state of Oklahoma left that in 2013, 14. It became kind of a political football. That being said, we decided to write our own standards here in Oklahoma, and as you get into the standards documents, they make some specific references to Common Core. So a lot of the Common Core parts still remain in our own standards. So when those new standards were rewritten, that required a new assessment to be created as well, and that being said, some of the standards and objectives shifted from one grade level to the next, and so all the old data is now obsolete, and you know, we can't make comparisons with this data to that data. One interesting thing was that the state has not released and is not expected to release any normative data for the state, which means the average scores across the state are not anticipated to be released anytime soon. Now, why? I don't really have an answer for you at this point. Maybe they're waiting for more, a little bit, a few more years of data to be, you know, amassed for us to have a better picture. SDE sometimes changes the cut scores, and of course, we don't get the data back to make actionable use of that, and so those, those state test scores, more often than not, are used by the state to craft policy and legislation, more than they are for us to use in our everyday instruction. So I want you to take this with a grain of salt a little bit. We're going to talk about ACTs as well. You remember the old end-of-instruction tests, they're gone. We used to have to pass four out of seven in the high school to graduate, and that's no longer. We now use the ACT to gauge where our kids are at. So, so taking a look at our reading scores, what you have is, the blue bar represents the 1718 year, which would have been the very first year that we went to the new assessments. 1819 would be last year. I'd like for you to take a close look at third grade reading scores there. You will see 1718 showed a 50% proficiency rating, and 1819 showed about a 65% rating. Now, that year is kind of an important year because you have to pass the third grade test for the Reading Sufficiency Act to be able to be promoted. Now, what this shows you is the proficiency rate based on all four reading standards. To pass the RSA, they only look at standards one and three. And so when we go back to that, 1718 showed a 93% RSA status that they could be promoted, and last year was 98%. Now, that being said, that 7% and that 2%, they were passed because of a good cause exemption. They probably had been held the previous year. They either had an IEP, there's like seven good cause exemptions, and so we discussed this a little bit in principal's meeting today. We probably are looking at maybe one student out of maybe 300 that didn't get promoted on the, on the third grade reading exam. So if you look back across this, this is where your cut scores come across. The cut scores are, have been raised considerably, and so you're seeing, you know, 40, 40 to 50% pass rate on most of those classes. You know, that would be proficiency, as the state deems what is proficient. Questions about these scores before I move on? Okay? Okay, so here's our math scores. We see a pretty, pretty low proficiency score, you know, across the board per state cut scores. Once again, 1718 is in blue, and the red represents 1819. So one test from another can look quite different, and I'm going to show you some other assessments that we're giving, because this kind of paints a little, a little bit of a bleak picture. When you look at the eighth grade scores there, 20% and just over 20, maybe 24% proficiency, you know, that's somewhat disheartening, but I'm going to show you some others that may give a fuller picture. Any questions about the math scores? All right, so the ACT has replaced the EOI's for several reasons. One, a true predictor of college and career readiness than the old EOI's. The old EOI was, you know, just a multiple choice test of content. The ACT is a test that has very little content outside of math and English. It's about can kids pull material from reading? Can they glean information from graphs and charts and things of that nature? So it's a completely different test. It saves money for SDE, a lot of money, and the state pays for all juniors now to take the test. So one of the things that you need to know before we get to the graphs, is that we now have way more kids taking the ACT on the avenue of about 30% of our kids are taking the ACT. So that being said, you will see a drop in your average ACT score. Okay, so if you look at the math benchmark, math students have to hit a 22 to be considered college-ready, college and career-ready. 26% of Oklahoma graduates met that benchmark. Okay? The English benchmark is 18, and our average score is higher than an 18, so we're meeting that benchmark. The reading benchmark is 22, and our average score also meets that benchmark. So in those two areas, we're doing pretty well. Math, we do not meet that benchmark, and in science, science is a 23, and our average score does not meet that as well. Only 16% of students in the state meet all four benchmarks, and of those, well, of all of them students, about 8% go to college and end up earning a college degree. This information came from Oklahoma Watch. Every year, they put this out in September, and you can look at your school, your school and compare it to other schools. So the scores that you're going to see are the averages of the highest score achieved by any of our graduating seniors, so you're not, you're not really looking at junior scores here yet. Well, if, if they took it as a junior, it would show up that was their highest score, is what I'm saying. Questions about the ACT? All right, so this is the community group. You see Chisholm is up there quite high, nearly a 24. This is 2016 data. If you look at all the schools in this list, Chisholm has the, the least economically disadvantaged kids. I think they were about 23%. And if you looked at New Kirk and Perry, they had the highest economically disadvantaged numbers of around 60 to 63%. So, you know, almost invariably, there is kind of an inverse proportion here, that when you have a low economically disadvantaged group, you see higher scores. Now, does that let us off the hook? No, it doesn't. But it kind of gives you an idea of some of the, the day-to-day battles maybe that we're facing in trying to raise that score. We show up there, if you look on the far right, composite, in 2016, we were just over 20 as our average composite score. That put us behind Chisholm and Fairview, but ahead or at the same level as the other schools in this community group. And then the purple represents the national average. So our composite score is above the national average. Questions on this slide? Okay, so here's your 2017 data. Something very similar. What you see is a pretty high reading score, relatively high English scores that meet the benchmark, and then our math scores and our science scores are below at that benchmark. You remember, science benchmark is 23. None of the community group met that for their average. Like 22 was the average in math, and we are 19 point something there. If you look at our, our composite score on the far right, we are below the national average, but above the rest of the community group with the exception of Fairview and Chisholm. Fairview's economically disadvantaged number was slightly above ours. I think we were at 38%, and Fairview was about 44%. Questions there? Okay. Now, we've been giving the NWEA MAP assessments, and we've talked to you about this a few times during principals' reports. This was an opportunity, we talked about the curriculum mapping project, proving that we've been teaching the material, teaching the standards. NWEA MAP is a way for us to prove whether those standards have been learned. Not being, you know, it's not enough to say that we taught it. We need to be able to, to show that they've learned it. This was an opportunity to align our benchmark assessments to our pacing guides and the standards that we're teaching top to bottom. We also have found that summer regression is a very real thing. You will see summer regression when they go for summer break. Not all kids do, but about half of them do. So, you know, when you have a, a teacher who runs up against, they're teaching a standard and says, well, you know, I'm not sure they learned this, or not sure they were taught this, well, they were probably taught it, but they had some summer regression and we need to review it. We also, this also allows us to clearly spell out which kids need remediation, and which specific standards they need to be remediated on. And it also is going to be helpful for us to do it by weaknesses in curriculum. So now, with that being said, I want to show you what our MAP, our MAP scores. Now, the next three slides are math scores. This would be the fall of 1718. The red represents the national average, and the blue represents the grade level average in Alba. And so by and large, we stay above the national average till we hit about fourth or fifth grade. Now, we, as you noticed, there is an upward climb every, every grade level. We are growing, but we're just not growing quite as fast as the national average when we get to that point. You know, and that could be a lot of things, and I can't tell you, you know, definitively that we have that pinned down to one thing, and it probably isn't just one thing. But I, what Mr. Argos and I have discussed on several occasions is that we think that, you know, there are several things that we do that are kind of rote in the early grades, and we're doing a good job of getting them a good background, and then things get quite a bit more complex as we move up. That's not to say that those teachers up there are not doing a good job. I've been, I've been up there, I've seen it, they're doing a good job, they really are. We need to kind of, we need to focus on a few things to help grow that a little bit faster. If you look to the far right, you see Algebra I, and that is comparing that to the eighth grade national average. Okay, so they took the Algebra I math, that was 17 kids, that would be our advanced mathematics students, and those are not figured in the eighth grade average. If they were, you would see that go up quite a bit. Okay, now, we don't have enough data to say that that's going to happen every year, it might just be that class. So here's spring of 1718. Still in math, same class. What you see is kindergarten, first, second, and third, you see a greater divide between us and the national average. We've grown them faster than the national average, but then we're still lagging just a little bit behind the national average, and you see Algebra I again blowing the top off of eighth grade's national average. Okay? So that was last year. So here is the fall of this year. Our fourth grade is above the national average. And what I really think we probably are going to see, as we continue to use this program and identify kids that need to be remediated, identify standards, I think we're going to see that, that national, we're going to grow above the national average further along the line. I think we're going to see that improve. Okay? All right, so now let's look at reading. Math has been probably our weaker point, reading's been our strength. If you look at kindergarten, first, second, and third, those grades are governed by the Reading Sufficiency Act. Now, I would suggest that if you went any school in the state, they probably are going to look real similar to this, because we know, we know really how to teach early foundational reading skills, do a pretty good job of that. And so there's a pretty good gap between us and the national average. Things start to catch up as we get up into seventh grade. So we're staying above the national average till we get up in there. Now, that's one class, fall of 1718. Here's the spring of 1718. The national average starts to catch up to us a little earlier. It may be that we're not doing enough reading, maybe we're not doing enough complex tests, we're not looking at primary source documents maybe enough in history and science. Here's the fall of 18. Fourth grade is above the national average, and then we're lagging a little bit there in the middle. Any questions on any of that?
Why did we stop at eighth grade?
We've, we've been using the, well, we're getting ready to start the ACT Aspire Test in high school, which is, now, I would tell you that both of these assessments are aligned to the ACT, they will both predict ACT readiness. But when we started this last year, we did it kindergarten through eighth grade. Any other questions on it? Any other questions on it? Okay. So, that may be hard to read there with the red, but, so these are the student services, this is kind of things that we're doing in Washington. We're gonna train with Dr. Laura Riffel. She's the guru of positive behavior intervention systems. That will be a pre-K through eighth grade training for teachers, and that, our hope with that is that we're equipping our teachers with strategies to help them manage their classrooms and manage challenging behaviors. That will hopefully remove some roadblocks for our instruction. It's hard for them to learn. If we're not managing classrooms well, they're not gonna learn. So, we're gonna pour into those teachers. That is a, that is a five-day training. We're gonna train January 3rd and 4th, and then we'll have a day in February, a day in April, and then a day in May, and then we'll have full implementation for the 1920 school year. So we're pouring into those teachers and trying to give them the strategies they need. That costs the district about $15,000 to get Laura Riffel here, and it's gonna be, I think, a fantastic opportunity. We also are doing challenging behavior, one, Oklahoma Autism Center. We're only sending a few teachers to that, maybe young teachers that are new to the district that didn't get trained on it last year. We had Tara Warwick come in and do, she got a grant through the RNL Foundation, and we trained once a month. I have to tell you that it changed my beliefs quite a bit, and our building is quite different this year in how we handle discipline issues, and it's been a success. And so, we're gonna send some of our new teachers to that so that they're brought up to speed and ready to go with Dr. Laura Riffel later. We're also having behavior matrix meetings with our high-need students in the special ed program, and what those are about is we look at the full day, and we break it down into parts, and we get very explicit about what the expectations of the teacher are, the expectations for the parent, the expectations for the child, and what kind of things that we're gonna do with them to bring about full inclusion. You know, it's not enough to have a high-need student just in your classroom, we want them to be a part of the instruction with their peers. They learn a lot from having that peer interaction. Academic and social supports, this one is pretty interesting. This is called Picture Exchange System. We spent about $1,500 to train teachers and another 400 to get the sources for this. We have several students with autism in our building, eight to be exact, four of them are nonverbal. We have more nonverbals coming next year. And if you would think about that, how hard it would be to teach a student that's nonverbal. But how hard it would be for that student to convey their needs and wants is pretty key. So, this is an example. I went and watched, observed one of our students who came to us nonverbal. The teacher would say, whatever the student's name is, you know, "What would you like to play with? What would you wanna do today?" And it is really amazing. The student will then grab the pictures, add them to the sentence strip, and say he wants to do a puzzle. So he does that, he sticks them on there, and he hands this to the teacher. Teacher points to these things, and he only makes vowel sounds at this point. "I want pu," or something of that nature. So then, we put it back on the strip, we take the pictures off, and then she says, "Well, which puzzle do you wanna do?" And he's pulled out, and he's forming sentences, okay? He says, "I wanna do the animal puzzle." He puts them on there where he wants, then he hands it to us, and then we go through it again. And this is just, this is game-changing, okay? So, not only is he telling us what he wants, but if you can imagine if he was in a dangerous situation or something, or he needs help from someone, he can now, he's gonna be able to convey his needs, basic needs. And this gets more and more complex as he goes through school. It might actually allow him to unlock language verbally anyway, but this is so huge. The parent works with him, speech path, as well as his classroom teacher. The growth, the, what he's able to do now is really awesome, and is really cool. So, our speech teachers are working with our nonverbal students in this way.
It started like in August?
Yes. We got training Lester.
Sorry. So, classroom management, we've talked about that, that'll be part of Dr. Laura Riffel's deal. ELL teacher, we hired Cynthia Leiter, our ELL teacher, to help our Hispanic-speaking students, and this is also a game changer. We have students in every building that do not understand the language. And, you know, as far as our regular ed teachers, the ELL teacher works with those teachers to help them create the bridge between English and Spanish, not just to teach them language, but to teach them the content in their own classrooms. Principals also, we train together on scaffolded instructional strategies that then the principals go back and present to their staffs. These would be engagement strategies, literacy strategies, and, you know, we have some fantastic discussions as principals in here about how we might use those in our buildings. Then we take them back, present them, we let the teachers then give us feedback, and we, you know, pose questions to them. "How would you do this at your age level?" And we try to, we try to present exemplars for their age level as well. We are extremely happy that Tara Warwick was able to gain the RNL Foundation grant for a second year. She did three schools last year, she was only given the opportunity to do one this year, and ALBA was that, was that school. So, we changed our goals for that. Last year, it was about building classroom management in each classroom. This year, it's gonna be to build a sustainable autism working group on staff at every level and every building, experts, so to speak, in autism. So when a teacher has a student with autism, they have a support network that they can go to for strategies. Classroom management for teachers across the district, as well as addressing specific student goals for some of our autistic students in our building, of which I told you, we had eight, and four of those are nonverbal. And so, she is, does a fantastic job with that. And a lot of those kinds of things that we're working on here are applicable to regular ed students as well. And that's why, I mean, it's such an awesome thing to have her available. So once again, we, as far as empowering site leaders, principals' meetings, we discuss curriculum, we discuss instruction, we discuss strategies, and we take them back. Those have been, I wanna tell you something, though. That is very intimidating for a principal to get up in front of their staff and present those things, because we have fantastic teachers in every building, and, you know, we need to honor their experience as well, and our principals are doing a good job. Site leaders promoting positive, healthy adult-student relations, that is one of the keynotes of PDIS, is that your interactions would be based in positive reinforcement and not, you know, punishment all the time. RNL Foundation grant also backs that up. We also have been spending a lot of time training parents in how to build rapport with their students, and what kind of instructional things that they can do to help us, and then greeting students and parents at the door every time we enter the building, be visible in the community. Now, I have one more thing. I've got Mrs. Peace here. We have two students that are, one is legally blind and likely will be blind at some point, and then another one that sees light, sees light and darkness, about it. And so, we are working hard and diligently to train those two boys in Braille. And we have a couple Braille writers, we have several activities, and Mrs. Peace can show you some of the really, really cool things that she's doing. She's learned quite a good Braille, and so has Mrs. Lovelace, because nothing's been learned before it's been taught, and nothing's been taught before it's been learned. So, Mrs. Peace is gonna show us a little bit about that.
Hi. Okay. So, this is our Braille writer. It's a little intimidating. Everything we do from numbers to letters to read is all done with six keys. Sorry to interrupt you. And I am teaching pre-K. I'm teaching pre-K how to recognize their alphabets. So, I'm not really sure what you, what you want me to show.
Well, one of the things to note about that is that you're typing combinations of those keys to create the different letters, but not show us the six spots of the cell so that they can understand.
So, I'm gonna find one that maybe not me.
A bunch of these students in your class.
I currently have one of the students, and the other one is, I am not teaching them Braille at this point in time, because they have enough vision that they are still reading big prints, but it is very large print. And the other student, like they said, it just light perception. So if you close your eyes and you look towards the light, that's all they see, and they see darkness. So, and with Braille, there are six keys, and it is a cell, and this is what the cell looks like. So, everything that they learn is done with cells. So, and if you have, you take out some of them, this is a letter, this is a letter, here's another letter. So when it comes to writing and reading, it becomes really, really difficult. So, I want, I'll just, I've got several of these, so you just wanna feel how difficult it would be for a student, the child does not see, again, anything, to run their fingers across it and be able to read. So what we're doing is, the beginning of the week, I teach the letter A, we'll do A, C, C as well. So I take all my, here, have some balls. I take all out, and we start at the top, and we say, "We're gonna count." So, one, two, three, four, five, six. Take your dot and put it in dot one. Dot one is an A, okay? And so then we go through, we're only on D this week, but, so A, B, C, D. And the child runs his fingers. After you have ran your fingers over it several times, you can start to feel the differences in the bonds. And so, he can run his finger over A and tell me A, B, tell me B, all the way through D. And then I take him to the Braille writer, and I sit down at the Braille writer, and I ask him to type A. And the Braille writer goes backwards. So if you have your cell like this, one, two, three, it flips up sideways, and it goes one, two, three, four, five, six. So not only do they learn it vertical, they have to learn it the horizontal way. And so, he can sit at his writer, and he can say, we sing a song that goes with it, and I wanna sing it every time we do it. "One is an A, ready to play." So he says the song every time he hits the letter. And I can say now, "What is one, four?" And he'll tell me that it's D. One, four, five is D. So, and that is only in the last three weeks that we've gotten these four letters down. So he's doing really, really well. This is really exciting. It does get more difficult when we start adding contractions and, you know, sentence structure and things like that, but right now, this is the point we are at, and, I don't know, this is like my, this is the best time of the day, because I'm learning something new with my students. Do you guys have any questions?
Are you teaching it to all the students, or just?
Currently, no, it's one-on-one. The child comes to me one-on-one for 30 minutes uninterrupted, and we do letters, we work on what the sound is, and then we read. So that is our 30-minute block. And he does do it in the classroom as well, so they're working on the same letter in the classroom that we're working on. And we have our matrix that you spoke about that tells what is expected for the child to do during this time, and how we're going to implement it with the rest of the, the rest of the classroom.
Mrs. Peace switched over from kindergarten to special ed this year. She's done a great job. That's where she needs to be. She's done fantastic work.
You don't wanna type? I'll let you type, for sure. Yeah, my little boy likes to pick this up.
I know, like you say, you'll be a rest of the day.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna mess with you, Peace.
Right?
I learned that a long time ago, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Where are we? I have some current. Larry, you put it right over there. 7.1, discussing the foster board action, vote to approve the ALBA independent school budget for 2018-19.
So, you have attached in your document kind of a book that I prepared for us all to kind of gain a better understanding of what our budget looks like. And if you look at page three, it gives you some general information of the Board of Education and the size and scope of our district, 634 square miles. That was news to me, something I didn't know, but through some research was able to find that. If you look over on the next page to four, it just kind of talks a little bit about where we're at right now as a district, and we are in good shape. Part of that, part of the reason we're in the shape we're in is through our gross production, which since FY12 has grown steadily. If you move over to page five, I'm not gonna take page one, but I do want to draw your attention to page seven, and that is membership summary. And this is something that's real important, and our principals have done a great job of this when we do our accreditation reports, and that's our weighted ADM. And every student has weights that are attached to them. Each grade level, the state funds us through a weighted formula. And our, and so our principals turn these numbers into accreditation officer, and that officer certifies those numbers, and through that, that's how we're funded. So enrollment is very important as part of our funding, and our enrollment has gone up. You can also see that our weights have gone up, and that's a direct result to, of looking at our identification of students, whether it be through economically disadvantaged, which is our free and reduced lunch applications, whether that's through our special education, doing a better job of identifying students and helping those students' needs, all the way through bilingual, you can see that those numbers are improving. So that's a tribute to our staff and them being meticulous when we do, turn those numbers in. You look at page nine, this is something that I thought would be helpful for you all to have. In the past, and you'll see in a few pages, we would run for you from our mass accounting system, the appropriations for the year, and it's kind of hard to tell what those numbers even mean. This is a breakdown of those approved appropriations to parents and associates. If you look at the top, the 18,369, that is our estimate of needs. If you look at each one of these numbers down through there, 2120 guidance services, 2135 occupational therapy, those are functions. And Terry and I, Terry Owen and I, sat down about a week ago and began to appropriate that, each function with a certain amount of money to equal our appropriations. But I think to give you a better picture and for us to truly be able to have a budget, you have to go a little bit deeper than function. And that is why I created the spreadsheet, and I didn't create it, but begin using this spreadsheet. And if you look at 16, that's kind of what you guys used to look at. It was just kind of a sheet with a bunch of numbers on it. So let me find it on here, mine's a little slow, I don't wanna flip through all my papers. If you look on page 20, it's general revenue fund projection and comparisons. So, what we've done here is I've created projections on column D for the possible revenue that we will receive. And then if you go through and you look at that next page, it took a couple of pages to fit all that in, it identifies our state funding, our federal funding, and our local funding, and I projected from that. My projections are quite a bit more conservative than our estimate of need projections, but if you look on the final page, 22, you can see possible revenue is 17,635,000, and you look at our budget, budget and estimate of needs of 18,369, so it's just a little bit less. So, when creating the budget, we looked at our expenditures also. If you were to look on next page, 23, and this is where I broke it down to maybe help us gain a little bit more understanding from month to month by object. And object is part of the OCAS coding system, and just to give you a couple of ideas of what these numbers mean. If you look at 344, you see security services there, and I know that's tough, that's, hopefully in the next month, we won't have so many papers, and I can make this a little bit bigger, but if you look at 344, you can see that we spent $59,000 in 17. if you look at 344, you can see that we spent $59,000 in 1718, if you look at column C on 344. So I projected $100,000 there, because we've increased our SRO, and there's going to be more expense associated with that. So that's part of what we did, is we went through this budget, and I went through and plugged in these numbers to develop an expense report or develop an expenditure budget. And you can see on page 24, if you look at the bottom of that column for 2018-19, what I've projected is 12 million. So we are well within our estimate of need spending. Any questions before I move on to the next one? Okay? If we were to look over to page 25, basically went through and did the same thing with our building fund, took those functions and gave you a definition about what those functions are, and then the appropriation that we used from Buddy Carroll. And this will allow us not to bring function changes. We know we're not going to spend this much money. We're appropriating that in that function so that that money is in place for the auditor. You look at page 26, and that is, again, what you used to look at, with just these lines and numbers. And 27 is the spreadsheet that I will bring to you each month and show you those projections, where we're at with collections, and you can see that in relation to our estimate of needs. Any questions about our building fund, revenue? And then on page 28, there are expenses. Again, on both of these projections, in the building fund and general fund, we are not projecting to spend more than our estimate of needs. Child nutrition, I did the same thing, gave you a description of each one of the functions and the appropriation that we've used to match with what Buddy Carroll gave us, and then an expenditure and a projected revenue report. So what I'm going to do each month is bring back to you these spreadsheets and give you an up-to-date look at where we are at with our collections in each one of those objects, but then also where we're at with our expenses in each one of those objects, so that we kind of know our standing and understand where some of those expenses are going. Have any questions?
Thank you. It's a lot of work that explains a lot. Absorb it better.
You can all, you're welcome. If there are no questions, I would recommend that we accept the budget for 2018-2019.
So moved?
I'm second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
7.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve closing the following precincts for the upcoming school board election. Precinct number 020110, 020220, and 020310 in Alfalfa County, and precinct number 760008 in Woods County.
The board voted to close these last year, and there was a senate race, so we were unable to do that. It happened at the same time as an election. So, talking with Mrs. Cohen, nothing has changed with regard to voter turnout, and I would recommend that the board would close the following precincts, 020110, 02220, and 03310 in Alfalfa County, and then 60008 in Woods County.
Motion that we approve, 7.2.
I'm second.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
7.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Board of Education election resolution to call for a school election to vote for a Board of Education member from office number four.
So this is to declare that office number four, there will need to be an election for that. We will post that election by November 16th. Might tell you, one of the things, learning, talking to our Woods County Election Board, is $500 for an election. Filing period is December 3rd at 8:00 a.m. to Wednesday, December 5th at 5:00 p.m. Are there any questions?
I make the motion that we approve 7.3.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
7.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following board meeting dates for calendar year 2019.
Thank Pam, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
As stated.
I want to thank Pam for helping me put this together and double-checked my Mondays. We did the first Monday of every month, with the exception of January 8th. We, there are some high school basketball games that day, and some middle school basketball games on that day, and we know everyone wants to be there for those. So January 8th is a Tuesday. June 25th is an end-of-the-year board meeting, and that, we felt like that would be the best date for Ms. Nettles and Ms. Owen to gather all their information. Any questions about those dates? There are none, I would recommend that we approve those following board meeting dates for calendar year 2019.
You mean, January the 8th?
January 8th, yes. Did I say Jan, no?
Okay.
Yes, January 8th is a Tuesday, I believe.
So there's high school games on the 7th?
Yes, I believe that. I want to say, I feel like Frontier.
It's Frontier.
Frontier, and I believe the middle school plays on the 7th.
Middle school plays on the 7th.
I have no game, no game shows up on January 8th.
I have Kyler Enid, 8th grade.
On the 7th.
Seven.
Because I think we looked, and there weren't any on the 7th.
Okay, sorry. So it is on the 7th.
Good deal.
You did the various ones.
I don't look out the room anymore. Okay, that's good. So everybody plays on the 7th. Busy day. I make the motion that we approve the dates, 7.4, second.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Hanson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
7.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve offer of employment to applicant number one, non-certified position for fiscal year 19.
Let me do it. I'd like to recommend that we hire Coley Belille, who is, Mrs. Belille, our vocal music teacher, it's her husband, to be the high school custodian.
Coley has subbed at Lincoln for a couple of weeks. He also did some subbing at the high school. Happy to have them in the community. He's done a good job. Look forward to working with him.
All right, back there. Yes. Motion to hire, say his name again, Belie?
Belie.
Belie, I'll never say that right. So, 7.5.
Second.
Usually not here.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sorry. Where are we?
7.6.
7.6, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a request from Coach Scott Ball to travel out of state with the baseball team to Omaha, Nebraska to play in the Battle of Omaha tournament, June 16th through the 20th, 2019.
So Coach Ball is planning ahead and working with some parents, and this is something that they're considering and working towards and believe they'll be able to do with no additional fundraisers. State travel requires board approval, and I would recommend that we approve this travel request for Coach Ball and our baseball team.
And it's June?
June 16th through the 20th, yes. I believe they're going to go up there and play, and then also watch some of the College World Series.
Have we done this before?
They had talked about it, but I don't know, yes, I think they did go up there.
The Renegade chose to go.
Okay. It was just summer, okay.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm second, I am here.
Shane.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Number eight, opposed executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation of superintendent per 25 of the state statute section, there is a vote to convene an executive session.
Make a motion to convene the executive session.
Second. McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Kane?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Hanson?